All right, six o'clock, we'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite in justice.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us for the Monday, July twenty first, twenty twenty five, City of Credit River Council Meeting. We will begin with approving or amending the agendas. Any changes to the agenda anybody would like to make? I will, I do want to pull three point two from consent agenda and put that as seven point five in general business. If there's no other changes, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Sada Box, second by Schumer, all in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We'll move into Sheriff's Report. So we've got Deputy Strack, I think will be first. And then we've got special guests, Sheriff Penning and Captain Collins after that.
Being Council Mayor, um, the June's report, because I didn't make the first meeting in July, uh, looks like there is almost six full pages of activity. Um, is there anything that you guys have questions on that stands out for the report?
Council, any questions for Deputy Strack? What if it's beating yet?
Yeah, yeah, there's still quite a bit of traffic. The first quarter obviously was heavy, um, slowed down a little bit. Um, over the last month or so, but still, still a lot of traffic running through on Eagle Creek. One seventieth is pretty heavy still. We're getting a lot of complaints on the cars coming from the Harley storage facility. Um, there is some traffic complaints on Texas going north and south with some of the construction stuff in there. So you'll see squads probably sitting on the shoulders quite a bit trying to deter that away, but um, other than that, for the, the report stuff, there's just a couple of things that I saw, but nothing, nothing major that stands out with major questions. So, um, August, is it August fifth, I believe, is Night to Unite. So that's been posted on our Scott County page. So assume you guys saw that. And then, um, September thirteenth from one to four is the credit river safety day at Clear Lake Park. So that is set with the combination of us and Three Rivers Park and the Scott County Parks. So it looks like we'll have probably probably like fire, the mountain patrol, hopefully, um, Public Works is planning on having a truck. Our rec safety will have either boat or the side by side. Um, our drone team will be there with demonstration, med fire, I believe, is coming. Some maybe hopefully some Scott County Explorers program. Um, Alina, working on getting dispatched there to have that dispatch center like we did last year and then possibly our county rescue vehicle, and then maybe our county emergency, emergency management there with some, something set up that they have. So so we look at for this year for the safety day. So other than that, any other questions?
Council, any other questions?
I do have one question, actually. The category called assist, that's like tripled over the last few months. From what it used to be, it used to be in the single digits, small single digits. Last month it was twenty. So what is assist? Is that just people are calling the sheriff and?
Yep. So there's a couple in here that are like public assists. Um, there's a lift assist, there's a motor assist. So like motor assist vehicle inside the road will stop out with it. Instead of a traffic stop, it's a motor assist. We're assisting that motorist. Um, the lift assist, that's self explanatory. Somebody falls, we go and help them up. Um, public assist could be anything from, you know, the, they have questions on a call or they have just assist in general with law enforcement questions. Sometimes it comes out maybe as a different call and then we'll change it to an assist call. Because that's all we're doing is ask answering a question. There's no criminal activity. It's just an assist about.
Okay. So you're not changing how? It's, it's just seemed the trend has been like in December, we had one in three months before that. We had three, four, five, and, and we've gone from like nine, ten, fourteen, twenty. It keeps growing the last four months. I don't know if you're scrubbing the numbers and making it.
Nope. I thi- I think what's happening is people realize that we're here and they're calling more.
Okay.
For, for questions answered. Um, because I know when I started here, um, you know, three, four years ago, we would have one to two pages of activity and now we got six act, six pages of activity.
Um, right. You can really see the trend. It's, it's really growing.
Yeah.
But is it, why? Is that on, is? People are ju- well, you just said.
Yeah, I, I think, I personally think it's because they know we're here. So why not use us? Um, you know, where before, if you didn't have an eight, a law enforcement agency, who, who do you call? I mean, they would call the sheriff's office and we would answer it, but now they know they have, I mean, it's what, four, year four, year five, fourth. Um, so they know that there's law enforcement here. Why not? Why not use them?
Okay.
So I, I think that's probably what, why you're seeing the uptick in the trend of it. Um, you're going to see more and more lift assists. Um, as population grows older, you're just gonna, that's just what we're doing. Um, and then the motor assist, you have, I think you got more people back out driving on the roads. So your cars are breaking down. So we're gonna stop and make sure that they're okay.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, um, last, last, we've been a year now where we have the fire department, uh, they respond to medical. Is that correct?
Yep.
But we still, we see quite a bit of medical from the sheriff's department too. So do you go if you're available?
Yep.
If you're not, you know, otherwise.
So we still get paged out or we still get dispatched out to all medicals.
Yep.
We will still respond to medicals unless we're tied up on a priority call that's we can't get to.
Yep.
Um, but I would say that's very far and few that we don't go to. We go to almost all medicals. And if, if I'm tied up, another partner will go.
Is that how it worked before too, when Alina was doing it, not the fire department?
Yep. So we still get, so we get paged out for, for medicals. Um, we'll respond, probably like fire will respond and then Lionel will respond. So probably like fire can't transport people to the hospital. Um, Alina will respond because it's their area. If they don't respond, they'll dispatch or mutually to, uh, uh, north, whoever's available, they're the ones that are transporting. So you'll have all three services responding medicals. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Strack. Appreciate it. Sheriff Fanny, Captain Collins.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council here. Let me hand out a few of these. I know you might have gotten them. Uh, we've been doing our annual report here just to give you a little update. Uh, we kind of rely on the deputies assigned to the contract to speak to you every month and check in. Um, we just prepared this flyer and it's also a good one for the, the public to know about as well, to put on your, you know, website and stuff like that. Um, just kind of highlights what we do and then also the array of services you get through the contract with us. So I'm just going to run through some of that key points on it to kind of highlight. Um, but starts out just some highlighting of our staff or chart, just so you're kind of aware of where people are. Uh, mission and vision, stuff like that. Um, and then just lightly talks about what the, what it looks like in our county. So each, each city has a police department except for you guys. You contract with us. So it just kind of shows who does what and how they do it. Um, and then just speaking about our model a little bit, um, when we started this, once again, now I'm getting confused with twenty one and we took the contract, twenty twenty. Um, you know, we started this, we, we kind of had a mutual agreement of let's, let's start this small, let's build it up. Let's not look at one of your, you know, neighboring cities and go, all right, let's hire seven cops today. I can't hire that many people. I can't train them people. We wouldn't do it well and it'd be exorbitant amount of cost to you guys. So kind of the thought is we're going to build this slowly and build it up. So we did one, one deputy for the first couple of years, added the second deputy. Now we're on the next kind of rendition of that, I kind of talking about when, when, when should we look at the next growth here to make sure we're applying the right amount of uh, resources to you and as well as make sure it's fair and equitable to the other, you know, townships and people as well that, you know, our staff are coming to cover calls. Um, so just looking at the call totals, so the first page on, uh, you know, great, they're not numbered, but the one stats and just total calls, just kind of showing it's the average, I'd say is around fifteen hundred calls and that includes calls for service from the public, includes traffic stops, uh, assists as I mentioned, anything that comes in that we do or we find ourselves is, is, is categorized that. And that'll go up and down with traffic stops and activity as well as just one, one neighbor who could generate thirty calls one month as we've seen, right? So it can also just grow quickly and go back to a normal number real quick, but, um, and then on that page two, we kind of highlight the different townships and then showing their population reference points as well as, as where you guys are related to our other ten townships that we serve. Um, and just given that, that reference, um, but really as you see in the monthly reports, crime is not an issue, right? You know, you don't have ongoing crime, ongoing issues like that. You also, because you don't have a downtown, you don't have bars, gas stations, you don't have the things that generate a lot of activity as well. Um, it really keeps that, that activity pretty, pretty in check. Um, going on to the, the next page of stats, uh, just highlights the origin of the calls. So whether it comes in through nine one one or non emergency or a deputy uh, creates the activity, you know, by finding a traffic stop, finding a motorist broke down, suspicion in the parks at night, things like that. So that's a seventy thirty, so seventy percent of the calls come in from the public, thirty we're generating ourselves. Um, and the one thing though too, even though we only contract for the eighty hours of service, you know, and our, our deputies are working during the day primarily. Um, at night you still see deputies patrolling, you know, so it's not like they get pulled back and they aren't in here doing, doing their work. They're, they go to the action is and where the activity is. So they know there's speeding issues on a fifth, they're going to be out there at night, you know, looking for speeders and DBOIs and things like that. So a lot of that self initiated too is also it's just any deputy that creates it. It's not just specific to the two assigned here. It's, it's any activity that's going on. Um, and they'll work together as well. If they know there's an ongoing traffic issue or something going on, there'll be a couple more deputies in the area, you know, looking for that issue to, to put it to rest. So that's how that looks. Um, that bottom chart there, call response by contract deputy. So that's that stat we try to track. Um, as I pointed out in the past, this isn't a perfect number. All we do is we track if the contract deputy is working, if Jeff's working, he handles a call. He checks a box and the box in the calls says contract deputy was handling it. At three in the morning, one of the other township deputies handles it, they don't check that box. So we just use that as a measurement of how many calls that come in total are handled by the contract versus non. Um, and with that, Jeff may be working tomorrow and take a fatal crash, whatever highways and six other deputies will come and help him, right? So it doesn't measure that. It just measures when the call comes in, was it contract deputy working and handled it? It's just a way for us to get that feel. Um, and I know as we talked, Mary, when we first were getting this going many years ago, there's different models, some counties or communities do. You know, they look at every single call and how many minutes each call takes and the rest in the report and all that stuff and how much downtime you should have. And they do these huge equations to try to spit out two deputies. We do it more on what's the right feel, right? And then two deputies is working good right now. I think we need to grow it a little bit to make sure we're covering it, but it's, it's in this call volume, you know, doesn't dictate that. If you were in a, a real busy, busy area, maybe we need to get into those nuts and bolts. But I looked at the time we'd spend crunching those numbers just to spit out what feels logical to us and the public, I think is a, is a good, good approach and pretty reasonable. So that number, as you can see, twenty one, twenty two, we were down in the, you know, scraping forty percent, low thirty or high thirty percents. We had the second deputy twenty three and twenty four, and now we're over fifty percent. So I believe it's fifty three, fifty four percent of calls that come in. We have a deputy assigned to your district or to your area through the contract doing it. Um, and that's just the one piece where I brought up even last year in a meeting, like we probably need to still look at adding. Um, I don't think that's today. I think that's probably two years from now. We should add and get that number in the seventies percent because you know, the difficult part is we cover eighty hours. There's eighty eight other hours in the week that we're not covering that we're doing the work. And then like I said, then the townships and other areas aren't getting that service. So just to try to be real kind of, how's the best way to do it? Um, and also plan for, like I've mentioned before, four years ago is hard to hire deputies. Now it's even harder. So I would rather have conversations and kind of plan out, all right, in twenty seven or wherever the year is, let's add the next one. We can plan on hiring, plan on securing equipment, all that stuff and just be thoughtful and in youth for budget reasons can plan ahead. Um, or decide to split it in the middle of a year or something like that to try to, you know, balance out the, the costs of it. But currently, like I said, we're in the mid, mid fifty percents that, that are covered when a, when a deputy is assigned to the contract and the rest is picked up by us. Um, next couple of pages stats, just talk about kind of our countywide activity, just to give an idea of what, or sorry, the first one's credit river still, but the top, top eight calls over the last few years, those don't change much. As you can see, the assists, as was brought up earlier, uh, by Mr. Markert, you know, we're in the seventies, eighties, one year's a hundred, one year's eighty. Those are kind of things that we don't control a lot of, but for instance, like a motor assist, we do find those and we're not working, we're not going to find them as much, but some are just needs of the public. So um, similar to the comment about, say a lift assist, we could have one resident that calls us multiple times a month for six months and then ends up maybe transitioning into a different care setting or whatever, and we don't see those calls. So it can, you know, also you can see ten, ten lifts a month, maybe just from one house that, so some of that stuff is just pretty uh, it goes up and down and, and things move, but the noteworthy thing, you look at the top eight calls and, uh, you don't even see a crime on there, you know, they're all uh, the neighborhood issues of, uh, dealing with stuff, you know, traffic issues, hazards, suspicion, and then there's the medicals which are always a big thing. And then, uh, you know, house alarms and things like that. So we're pretty proud of that, that data. Um, like you said, crime isn't, isn't a huge problem. I think we're, the approach we have here is working well. Um, talked a little bit about proactive policing too, by being out and being in the community, especially having dedicated people here versus, you know, deputies patrol townships and coming through the area. They can really address the ongoing needs, you know, if a neighborhood has an issue about certain things, whether it's an e-bike or a four wheeler or general speeding on a highway, they can come and just spend that time working on it when it's dedicated and give it that attention versus, you know, a lot of times we only have two deputies working. So the east deputy is patrolling for townships, they're not going to have a lot of free time to just to patrol a neighborhood and kind of work on that neighborhood issue or stop and talk to people, learn about it. Cause sometimes Jeff or the other deputy driving through a neighborhood and somebody flags them down riding their bike and talks about, well, yeah, here's what we saw last night. We don't want to bother you. It wasn't that big of a deal, but here's what we saw. And we go, oh, that's a problem. Like we need to know about what's going on at that house because that's a good clue. So a lot of that contact creates then even more proactive work because we can be aware, um, no different in national layout than next week. Every week, every year I go to that and I go to, you know, eight, seven, seven, eight neighborhoods. You, I'll find out about something like that at every one, but it'll be some that feels like, ah, we don't want to call, we don't bother. It's, doesn't feel like it's a big deal. But it's been bothering us and I go wolf, the neighborhood all sees this is not right. The, the car in the neighborhood that's coming through or the time or the activity at a certain house, like you would know because you're living there, right? You know, it doesn't smell right. So so a lot of stuff does come up just because we're out there and more active and, and more, more involved because we have the dedicated time. So so that, that is super helpful and that's what drives down bigger issues. I always like to say that, that call of the minor thing, we might piece together an issue and fix it or solve it or work with the family or whatever. If we never get that call three months later, somebody might be going to jail because something has turned into a problem, right? Somebody's going to get hurt or something bad is going to happen. So it's always better for us to deal with something on the front end and really be able to address it and fix it or get resources to the family or the, the needs there. Um, the next one is just our countywide stats. I like to start including that this year, just the way to see what else is going on, um, because it can be hard to tell what else is going on in the community, but amongst our ten townships and your city, here's kind of the calls that we've dealt with. Um, put in the traffic stops there as well. You know, you got almost five thousand traffic stops. We did last year, you know, that, that number's been growing as, as, uh, people are out and about more and, and we're out from some of the changes that came during COVID and just the, the issues we're trying to keep up with. Um, and then our nine one one center. So we host a nine one one center for the whole community. So every city and township in Scott County, if you call nine one one, comes to our center in Shakopee, we dispatch the police, fire, ambulance, whatever that need is. Um, but just highlighting that volume to a hundred, you know, a hundred, forty thousand calls come in there a year that we're, we're processing through. Um, and then the next five, six pages are just kind of highlighting the different resources we do. So we just have a little photo there and a title, but just kind of reminding you of all the different stuff that comes with with working with us that, uh, we think makes sense, gives you a really good value for your community. And like I said, we're, we're happy to be part on the front end of that. So just highlighting the different things like the K nine, the, the, uh, drone team investigators, um, you know, like last year we had that murder and another thing, you know, we measure this eighty hours a week, but we don't log all the hours that we put into the community. So like that murders hundreds of hours of time in those first few weeks. And then even last week, now there's court going on, you know, and deputies are over there in court, going through hearings. Best be a big effort into, in a case like that, that doesn't get measured in the, you know, fifty four percent of the calls get handled when deputies work and it's, uh, those are the things which we do. So so that stuff happens behind the scenes or crime scene, uh, you know, stuff like that. And they're part of a regional drug task force and regional tactical team as well. So any needs around that stuff just gets handled without any extra fees or costs or commitments from you. Um, and then a couple of pieces we do too is, uh, countywide, we do electronic forensic. So a lot of cases, almost every case now involves a Peter's cell phone, social media, some digital, even a car crash. Now we pull the black boxes out of the cars, you know, on a fatality. We have people that do that work and do crime analysis work to help us study trends and piece together regional type issues to, uh, solve them. And then as you reach through, there's a bunch of other stuff, uh, but one we're really proud of is our coordinated response. So we have mental health, social workers embedded in the sheriff's office that work with our deputies. So when we go to a house and there's a need, they make a referral and the social worker jumps in and does that work to help get the person that supports they need, which in turn reduces the calls we get in the future and also keeps them, whether something else worse happens, somebody gets hurt, somebody goes to jail, all the things that can come with that. Or the cost of deeper end services to the county, if somebody gets really into the, the weeds of like a civil commitment situation. So we have uh, assigned social worker and then now the whole county, we've added, there are up to four social workers are assigned. So covering all the cities, including us, and then one in the jail that works with people to help, uh, get them on their feet. So that stuff has been great and a great resource. Uh, we show up to a call and mental health, we're not trained in it. We don't have the tools and we just deal with the outcomes, right? When it doesn't go well, that's what you read about in the news. So these, these resources and they're all funded through that opioid settlement that came through a few years ago and it's grown since then with different, different cases, but that is funded through that as well as some other state, uh, grants and stuff for mental health that the county does it. So it's been a great, great tool for us and for the staff to be able to have that resource that instead of going to somebody's house and two days later you're back again, like, hey, it's me, I'm here, you know, I don't have anything more for you today, but I'm going to try to talk to your son and taking his medication or whatever. Now we have resources with eight, then they take the follow up and they go out and work with the family and work with that, that issue and try to get them resources and get them connected to who it is, you know, it could be that the meds are off and they work with the doctor, the pharmacist. It could be that this person's not on anybody's radar and gets them engaged with, you know, human services to get them in, into resources. So that has been great. Um, Jeff already talked about national night out coming up. You guys always do a good job. Usually have what thirteen parties or so or more.
Last year we did, yeah.
Yeah. So that's, that's been great. It's a good way for us to get out. We really put our whole effort into that, uh, getting, getting our staff out, whether it's our drone team or rescue, all the different things that we can do, we get out and show people and, and like I said, I always, you just build good conversations through that. Um, and then lastly in the update, we have just a couple of new pieces of equipment. Um, so we have a rescue and response vehicle that has been in the Scott County scene a couple of months ago. Uh, armored vehicle to go through deep water, go through off road situations. It can do a ton of, ton of stuff. Um, was recently in Sibley County on that manhunt, uh, keeping our people safe, letting us get close to areas and keep us safe and let us navigate, you know, pretty, pretty difficult scenes. So that's been great. Got a lot of use out of that vehicle. And then another tool we, uh, got through a grant and that was through a grant through the federal government to purchase that. And then another thing we got is a portable surveillance trailer. So we have one of those camera trailers that has the big boom. Um, it was in Savage, uh, a couple of months ago. They had all their problems at their basketball courts. Um, that Valley Fair recently, uh, we just had it at, uh, Parley Music Fest last weekend, or two weekends ago. Um, great tool. It can do a live stream into our phones, into our computers. We can see what's going on. Um, and once again, keeps people safe. We can see stuff from a distance or it can be used like as a preventative thing like that where you know, there's going to be a lot of people somewhere, we can cover that crowd at the music fest. And if something bad happens, we have eyes on what is going on and can help help direct, direct resources and stuff. So those have been some good tools, been very lucky with some of those federal grants the last few years. They all take a while and yeah, so you get the grant and about two years later you're getting the vehicle, but, uh, it's, it's all here. And I think lastly, we got our new speed trailer too, uh, last month, I think that got out. So that's been out and about. Uh, our other one had, uh, ran out of time. So, uh, so we replaced that finally and then have that speed trailer and as a message board sign as well. So we can use it for other situations too, to alert the public of, of scenarios and situations. So um, that's
Twenty one.
Yeah. So it's been out. Yeah. So we're happy to have that one up and running. Um, it's a good tool and we can even get analytics out of it too. So it might be in a neighborhood, you know, say with construction building around about in the neighborhood to get all this traffic, we can put that up and also get data on how fast people are going or not and kind of bust out what the need is or what the time is and stuff like that. So the analytics are super helpful too, to give us a a little direction of where to go and when to be there. So um, with that, that's kind of the full report. So you've been Oh, Oleman. So our new K nine is up and running too. So as of May, um, our K nine for the year, uh, our new K nine got, got trained. He's out on the road right now. He's with Deputy McCabe. And, uh, that was made possible through a resident of Credit River again this time. So eight years ago, they sponsored our, our purchase. Um, and this year again, with the same family came forward, sponsored the dog, the training, the kennel, the whole overshoot match to get that dog set up, thirty thousand dollars of, of funds to get that going. Um, it's just been great, great partnership. So hats off to your community for that one. Cause that is a, that is a big one, especially when you think of the current budget times and things like that. Dogs are expensive and they're, it's a huge, huge investment and an ongoing cost and that. So it's been great.
That is a current picture of the two.
Oh.
That's, so that lives.
And then I think beyond, uh, that, uh, we did last minute here, I apologize. I forget it was a fair week when I signed up to come today, but my accountant got our numbers for next year of the two deputies. And then in there, like we did last year, we talked about just the proposal of adding, my thought was that you'd add a sergeant, the next person and have supervisor. They could interface with the, with the board more. We could have more leadership at the team and then you would put the other deputies onto a more of an evening shift. So we'd get better coverage. Um, but also like I said, hiring is hard. I would rather plan for that. So my thought is, you know, we should talk about maybe in twenty seven, that would be a thing or even halfway through twenty seven, two years from now. Um, build that in. And like I said, that would give us more coverage in the evening. It's definitely reduce your response times too, you know, because when our deputy's not working, you may be getting somebody from Elko, even the west side of the county coming. So I think three would be that good number that would get us safe for a long time. Like, like we talked about, if you had some businesses or twenty four hour events or things like that, yeah, you probably need more people sooner, but at the current rate, your, your calls aren't growing. It's, it would be more of just getting that kind of just stabilized, I think, to give someone a good coverage. Um, and then we've talked to you lately, uh, animal control, you pay through us basically. So we host animal control, you pay the portion of population. Um, with all the budget talks to the county, they're looking at, okay, what do we need to do with animal control? So we've been looking at that. I think we're going to be able to keep for next year. We have, but it may be, we look at a reduced service. Or we'd have to have you go out and seek your own, uh, but we'll see. We're. We're in talks. Everything's kind of being examined right now. So we're trying to figure out ways to, to cut costs, but also not change a service to the community too much. So. So we'll keep you in the loop and work with Steve on that. If we get any updates in that change, but knowing it takes time to. See contracts, everything where our hope is we could keep it probably the same through next year. And then during that time, try to analyze what would be the next, next fit. Or if we do reduce the services, that may be the choice you guys want to do is do some differently, but. Um, it's a tough, it's a tough thing. There's a lot of options as, as we've probably discussed in the past. So, uh, but definitely, that's definitely necessary. So. That's all I have. If you guys have questions or. I do. Yeah.
I just have one. Uh, so 70% of the calls were resident initiated and 30 deputy. Do you know what the trend has been over the last years?
The trend? I don't know if we've tracked that one. I think that's one that we're trying to think of some new data to build this. I don't think we've tracked that one in the past. Um. I don't think it would change too much. I think our traffic stops are up the last couple of years. So it probably. Changes a little bit, but it's just to give you kind of a measurement of what activity they're creating versus what the community asked for. But. That one, the base of the fact that we don't have a prior year in there, I'm assuming that's one we haven't. It's a new data point that we added this year to kind of give you a little more stuff to look at.
Okay. Yeah. I think that'd be great to see.
Yeah.
Next year, having, having them start the trend. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Do you see any cities? Do you know of any cities that charge their residents for like a, uh, alarm call that really isn't a lot? It, they just tripped it by mistake. To try and incent people maybe not to call you. So you don't have to send, send somebody out.
There is, it's pretty common in a lot of suburbs, they'll have it or they'll have a, you know, say two a year, maybe or something, you know, that you get three, and then the third one they'll bill you for.
So that's something that we could.
You could do, it would be, uh, more of a city ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, but yeah, it's something you can look into. Um. What is our numbers here?
Number of miles.
Models of how they do it. So I'm just looking here. Yeah. Your average is one fifty, one sixty a year. Uh. That has gotten better though. I would say when me and Steve started 25 years ago, I would, I don't even want to know what that number is by a thousand, because. Now people have ring doorbells. They, not many people buy the ADT system or do that. A lot of people have the ring or the nest, even their smoke alarm. So they'll log in, look at the camera and we don't even know about it. So those numbers are. A better than it was many years ago. It was like all day long, you would go to these false trips and multiple houses at the same time. And. We'd also probably want to study what the addresses are of these to see if we have any, you know, out of the 167, is there 10 that. Would generate the, the fee or to be 50, you know, just to know what that number is too. But the number definitely has gotten, it's changed a lot. I don't think as many people have the subscriptions versus the. The, uh, do it yourself kind of, you know, which is kind of cool because they log in, they see, okay, it's UPS dropping off a box and bumped the door. Nothing's broke. And then we don't get the call. Cause. That used to be a really heavy, heavy call load for years.
And, and could you help me refresh my mind? When are our deputies today on, I know it varies, but generally is it six to six? Is that when we have one?
Eight AM, six PM.
That can fluctuate. Uh, they usually have training going on on Wednesdays. Um, and maybe a little bit later, a little bit earlier depending. Generally eight AM to six. Okay. Cause it's pretty, the call, the incidents are, are distributed pretty evenly between. Uh, six AM to the noon, noon to six, and then six to midnight. And that's the piece that we're probably missing then with a, a, a signed deputy then, right? A third of the calls.
Yeah.
Hours. Yeah.
Yeah. And I would say the. Biggest need is kind of seven AM to seven, because it starts ramping up at six and then seven PM it starts tailored off. And that's where we were always with 10 hour shifts. It's a little. So tough to meet it. And that's where like it.
Yeah.
You'd catch more of the calls if we spread it out. And then like Steve said, what we do is sometimes if somebody takes PTO or whatever, we would backfill with a afternoon car, a different day. And so we get a few more calls in those odd hours, but.
Right.
Yeah.
So would the county ever consider like doing a per call fee as opposed to hiring a dedicated deputy? Because the sixth to midnight. There's, we only average maybe one or two of, um, a day.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and. It's just something. Or is that too difficult to administer?
Yes.
And the sheriff, but the, we have a person, we hired them at a forty hour wage. It'd be challenging to. To have them and only, only have their, their fees covered for. Well, I had one call last night, so that would be hard.
But there is, there is some different models. Like I said, the, the model, some use, they do a full analysis of every call and how long calls take and they try to spit it into equation and, and that could be done. It just takes a little more work. Um.
But you don't do that today with any.
We don't do that today. Just trying to keep this simple, you know, and, and kind of be wise with their, with their resources, but, um. That could be looked at. And then the only downfall of some of those models too, is then they don't maybe patrol when they're not here, you know, they would just be like, well, we'll, we'll drive into your city when the call comes out. Um, so that's where we try to balance it too. Like, oh. I feel for public safety, I'd rather just have people. 24 hours a day, at least coming through the community versus kind of looking at as this is one-off.
Reassuring that I see, I see.
Yeah. So that's kind of the way we look at it. We kind of our hands off, let the deputies go where the business is and, and those response times are better that way. But that is summarily. Mince it down to the, you know, minutes and then in turn, I would say there's some after effects too of that and you wouldn't have. You know, the medical call, we wouldn't maybe be close. We may be two townships away versus. We're kind of just coming through the community when there's a need or at two in the morning, when the only traffic's on 21, they're going to come up here and work, you know, and get drunk or something else. So, but there's different, there's definitely different models.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Perfect. Anybody have anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Very good.
Well, thank you.
Sheriff and Captain Collins, appreciate the, uh, what you guys in your department does. And, uh, kind of sort of like Jeff back there, I mean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just be safe out there. Yeah. Thank you. All right. We'll move the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda, which are considered routine or non-controversial, included as part of the consent agenda. Unless a council member specifically requested an item on the consent agenda be removed, it can simply. Items on consent agenda are considered one emotion, a second vote. Any item removed from consent agenda shall be placed at the end of the general business tonight. So consent agenda, we've got three point one approved the minutes of July 7th, 2025 city council meeting. Three point three application for lawful gambling permit for the Minnesota Concrete Council. And three point four approval of payment of claims, bills and transfer requests as presented. Is there anybody who'd like to remove anything from consent agenda? Otherwise I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve.
Thank you, Libber.
Second.
Thank you, Jay. Motion by Schumer, second by Sid Rock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Anybody opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Open forum, the public forum is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address the concerns of the council. The public forum will be no longer than 30 minutes in length and each presenter will have no more than five minutes to speak. Topics of discussion are restricted to local governmental topics, for applied private or political agendas the council may discuss, will not. Formal action on public forum presentations. Tom Wiener. I'm going to move this over so it's shot better.
Can you see her now? I'm blocking it. I went the wrong way. That's okay.
Too wide for it, Tom.
Yeah, that's true. All right. So. I'm here today. Because when I watched the, uh. June 16th. Council meeting. He said something, Chris, Mr. Mayor, that I took exception to. And that was that you felt that the. Committee that I'm part of did not do our job. That's not why I'm here though. I just wanted you to be aware of that. And we can talk about that in general business, which I don't know really why you moved it. Cause it's just a resolution. It could have been a yes, no vote. So that tells me something, I think. What I'm really here for. Is I heard the people talking. In that meeting about their disdain for this building. Stinks. It's not safe. It's crowded. They don't feel secure in here. It's a lot of problems. I know for myself and probably speak for a lot of homeowners here, I don't want my tax dollars going towards a building that's going into disarray. Plus. The fact that we're losing people, you just lost a clerk not too long ago. And now I see you want to try to bring in people with retention or keep people with a retention bonus. Which isn't going to work. Because if they don't have a good work environment, they're going to leave. You're not going to attract the quality of people that you want trapped. Might have them here for a while. But ultimately they're probably going to leave. So. One of the things that I was really disappointed is you didn't take up our resolution when we talked about it. Um, or was it a resolution or was it, uh? Okay. You didn't talk about our, you didn't second our resolution. Nobody did. I'm really surprised by that. Because of the work that we've done and the information that we provided, and then what I heard that you go, I want to do instead, which we never heard that before. Would have been nice going into a, a, a nine month venture, knowing that upfront, what your intentions were. What I, what I would like to do as a taxpayer. And make sure that you do this is present another resolution. That's going to test the water. The septic. The soil and the slab, the concrete slab here to see if they're even safe. Could be hazardous, maybe not, but I think at the very least. This council has to do that. You can't do anything to go forward, whether, whether you buy land and want to build a building, whether you do nothing. Whether you want to refurbish this building, tear it down, build a new one, whatever you want to do, you still have to do that. So at the very least. I think that should be done. Where do I present this resolution or who do I present it to? You, the council?
Labor with the atmosphere.
Okay, I'll do that. But I feel it's imperative that this be done in the next 90 days and, or at least get on your agenda for the next meeting to talk about it. So that can be done, but it has to be done. Because I don't like being in this thing. Every time I go home, I stink. I don't know if it's diesel fuel, because this thing was built on top of a gas station or whatever the case is. This is a problem that you're going to run into trying to keep people. And I don't, I just don't want my tax dollars going towards that waste. I don't have anything else to say, but I'm going to present this resolution, which is. To do a subtle testing, water testing, air testing and a slap testing as they, as they suggested.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, next up we've got Jared Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, my name is Jared Cruz. I was also a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee for, um. The last nine months. I just wanted to, to share some information that I gathered, uh, with, uh, the council that I thought was a little interesting. Um. And again, a lot of this information was, was either gathered from Met Council, the US Census Bureau or the city's, uh, information itself. Um, anyway, I've been a resident in Credit River since August of 82. Um, I'm just going to take a stab. It's probably longer than most people have been. Um, and I can remember the developments and so forth in this community, uh, growing up. Um. Anyway, as most of you know, uh. Credit River was a township back then had. Contractors and the total population back in 1980 was 2,360. Total residents with 637 households, right? Residents were happy with the way things were. Move ahead to 1990. Uh, the population grew to 2,854 with 864 households. Again. Services were contact contracted, residents were happy. Uh, 2000, year 2000, 3,895 residents. With 1,242 households. Again, same operation, same results. Um. And then moving ahead, again, 2010, 5,096 residents and 1,662 households. And then in 2020, 5,493 residents with 1,815 households, right? Fast forward to today. And again. Um, this, the most recent stats that I found were 2023 with 5,665 residents. And 1,903 households, right? And the reason I bring that forward is if you look at the last 15 years combined. Is roughly 11%. So. Less than 2% each year, each consecutive year. And that's going back to, to 1980. So again, pretty significant timeframe. Um, and again, looking at growth, growth, projection, growth possibility and so forth. Again, I just, I want to get that out there. So again, if we look at the same stats, move it ahead, 15 years. That would only be another 2,000, excuse me, 207 additional housing units over a 15 year time span. That's not very much. Uh, when you look at everything. Also land use permit value is stagnant from 2008 to 2017. And again, in 2020, um. Again, not much being built over that, uh, reference timeframe. And again, look at available land. Again, this was also gathered from Met Council's, uh, website. Um, US Census Bureau and the city itself. Look at available land, um. In a four-year. Window with agricultural and undeveloped land was 8,965 acres in 2016. And 8,808 acres in 2020. So do the math. It's only a loss of 157 acres from nearly 9,000. Um, again, over a four-year time span. That's isn't, that isn't very much. Um, again, break it down further, specifically agricultural land is 3,774 acres in 2016. To 3,772 in 20, 2020. Um, again, two acre loss in four years. Uh, undeveloped land, there was 5,191 acres in 2016, 5,036 acres in 2020. Uh, again, very small decrease from a four-year timeframe. Um. And again, looking at the statistical data, uh, going back a number of decades and the growth rates. Um, I understand nobody can protect, excuse me, predict the future, but. I would just say hard pressed that we're going to have a population explosion in Credit River. Just. My analogy and from the information that I've gathered. Um, and also there's, if you look on the Credit River Rural Alliance website, they've got 14 pages. Of residents replies in opposition of spending tax increases and expansion of commercial, industrial and high density housing. So. Again, looking at kind of what the cities, citizens want and taxpayers. So. Um, and I'm, if anybody's interested, I'm more than happy to send this with the links and the other information that I gathered. Anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jared. Bryant.
Mayor and council members, my name is Tom Bryant and I serve as the chairman of the Government Center Citizens Advisory Committee. I strongly urge you tonight to vote to support the resolution that extends the term of our Government Center Citizens Advisory Committee by another 12 months. Citizen participation and involvement in local government is critical. And it'll only reinforce the importance of citizens giving their voice to major decisions by this council. In your packet is this supplemental report from the Government Center Citizens Advisory Committee. Based on the committee's most recent discussions at their June 30, 2025 meeting. This was, report was necessary due to statements made by council members at the June 16th council meeting. And I'll respond to each of those statements, uh, separately. First. The committee did meet its primary objectives as was reported in the committee's 50-page final report provided, provided to the city council. The committee's supplemental report explains in more detail the process we use to meet those objectives. So I urge you to read that. Essentially, the committee determined that the needs of the residents will be met. At least for the next five years by contracting for various services. Which negates the need for buying land and building a public's work building or a new city hall at this time or in the future. We made additional recommendation. That recommendation is that the council and the committee schedule a town hall meeting to provide residents more information about city services. How they're provided and obtain additional resident feedback in order to provide the council with more input on what to do with this building. Second, after further research through Scott County Environmental Services and a private SEPT company. There is a very good likelihood, according to those two sources, that there is sufficient space on the south side of this building. To install a new septic system. If this building were to be remodeled and or expanded. Third, the committee did consider future planning beyond five years. The council statement is that we didn't look at 10, 15 and 20 years. That's not accurate. We looked at snow plowing services out to 10 years. And we also looked at metropolitan council population growth estimates for Credit River through the year 2050. As Jared indicated, there's only a couple of hundred more people expected in this city over the next 15 years. Given those small projected increases in population, the committee determined again, there was no need for a public's work facility or a new city hall building. Fourth, council member, uh, committee member, Tom Weniger, has spoken tonight about responding to city staff concerns with this building. And I urge you to proceed with expediency to conduct those necessary air, soil, water and septic testings. You need to find out if there's something wrong with this building. And if there is, you need to fix it. Also, a further recommendation was made for the council to consider as an alternative to remodeling this building. To rent office space in a commercial office building located in Prior Lake. And to pay for that rent with interest off of the six hundred and five thousand dollars that the city has from the federal government COVID funds. That would be a zero net impact on property taxes to residents to have city staff have their offices in a professional office building. Finally, committee member Jared Cruz just conducted additional research on the more than eight thousand acres of agricultural and undeveloped land in the city. This data on land use does not support the statements that were made. That since there's less and less land every day, then the city has to go out and buy land now to potentially build the city hall in the future. That's simply not supported by the data. Again, I urge the council to consider the resolution to extend our. Term for another twelve months as our work is not finished and we look forward to working with the council over the next year. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant? Got one more name on here. It looks like it might say Bruce, Bruce B. Maybe? You don't mind stepping up to the podium, sir?
Reason I come here today, I've been a resident, I'm sure I say I own property here for the last six months. I bought it to watch my grandsons play football. They've been raised in this community, born in this community and live in, uh, Alcoa New Market. So I said, you know, this is great. I got a brand new house, a custom house built, I, in Sioux Falls. I've got a condo in Scottsdale. I've got a farm, a ranch in Montana. And I used to farm up by Dilworth. The problem I'm having is. Every time I work with somebody in this group, it just never gets done. Every time I come, I've talked to people with, uh, USDA about my farm, his registered farm. I live at two zero one oh one Texas Avenue. Now, the situation is the county has now said, we can't clean up what is a mess. I have trees laid over that are close to the road and if the next one falls, it could go on the road. My, my driveway I had was totally unsafe. So I applied to put a new driveway in. Up on top where C Z C both directions. I got that done. I was gonna be done next week. I come in and talk to Steve and said, is there anything I'm missing? Is there anything I gotta do? So I don't get in trouble. Because I understand when I read three hundred pages of rules and regulations. My Scotts, my Scottsdale, uh, Achoy is not as restricted as yours, as yours guys are. And I'm not very true on that. Um, so I guess what I've really come here to say is that. Instead of inviting somebody into the community who wants to help people to grow their own vegetables and help out veterans when there's funerals. That's where I'm at. That's what I come here for. And, uh. And nobody even took the time. The first thing I got from this county, from the city, was a stop order. Because I was putting gravel on my driveway because my pickup, which is a toner, slipped right in the ditch beside there. Uh, when it was cold and winter out. I said, this isn't a good place. Put five loads of gravel in there. And I got a cease and assist that was over a thousand feet. Well, there was a county and there was a city there. The, the city said it was this much, either a thousand or two thousand. And the county said, well, it's either a thousand or two thousand, but neither one knew. And Matt, who I was dealing with. He said he'd have to call somebody and he'd get back to me. Not very good at that. I tried, I've talked to him several times. And then we've changed staff, continually changed staff. And every time I've tried to go back to work with somebody, I have zero, zero. I mean, I talked to Steve on Wednesday. Steve told me that he was gonna talk to this lady that is, that is contracted. On the, on her permits. Never heard a word. Now it's Monday night. I'm thinking I'm good to go. But instead of me hoping I'm good to go. I hold my butt up here to find out if I am good to go because this week the guy is taking the one driveway out and putting the other driveway in. So with that said, I hope I'm good to go. But I thought for six months, somebody in this group. Somebody in this community could do like, uh, they used to have wagon, uh, uh, what do they call them? Wagon, uh. Where, where they come around and in, and bring people into the community. That's not happened. If people want to know what people are doing, they got to knock on their door. With that said, um, I enjoy it. I'm waiting for football season. And my, my thought process is build the ditch and build, put the ditch in, put the power in. And see what I can afford to buy and with what there is a time and place to do. So, no secrets, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else for open forum tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to general business. General business seven point one, offer of employment to Sue Iverson, the position of finance director. Excuse me, Miss Rigel Ski.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in the, in the packet is the additional offer of employment that was. Okayed by, uh, Sue Iverson, um, and the hiring committee. Who interviewed her. Um, so we're looking for an approval of that contract, uh, employment contract. Uh, along with that contract, uh, there was a request from Sue's, uh, I guess current. Current employer that has, um, a placement fee in their, in their contract. Um, I'm gonna read that quickly here. Um. And it says that, um. The, the placement fee, uh, which would be thirty-nine thousand dollars, um, is a. As a provision that shall not apply or the employee independently applies to a publicly advertised position. Or if the employee has not provided services to you within the last twelve months prior to their employment. And that's on page five. Uh, of the contract, um, between the city and Clifton Larson Allen. Uh, my interpretation of that language is that we do not owe that fee. Uh, because that position was posted on May eighth of this year. Uh, the contract with CLA was not signed until May twentieth of, of this year and. Uh, Sue submitted her application on June twelfth of this year. Uh. So Clifton Larson Allen believes that the city recruited, uh, recruited Sue. Um, we did not recruit her. We did encourage her to apply, uh, because she's well qualified for the position, um, as you know. Um, so my recommendation is not to pay that fee, uh, but my recommendation is, is to offer that. Offer of employment to Sue.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, council members, comments, questions? What is the rate of change today?
Mayor and council, um, this is a disputed contract term. Uh, and I don't think I can give legal advice on this in a public session. Uh, if you'd like to schedule a closed session to, to get my candid views about all of this, I can give them to you privately. I don't think it'd be appropriate for the council to waive the city's privilege around this sort of thing. Uh, so all I think I would say publicly is I support Steve's position.
Thank you.
I, I think we should make them, make the offer as is, accept it without the paying the fee. I don't think, I think it's pretty black and white on there. Uh, it was publicly, um, placed out there. So it wasn't, uh, anything that we were taking her away from Clifton Allen.
I agree with you. Agreed. Yeah, it, it, uh, the timeline doesn't add up to saying that we recruited her and, and, uh. Attempted to. Violate that clause of the contract.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the offer of employment to Sue for the position of finance director and not pay that thirty-nine thousand dollars.
I'll take Bill on the second. I'll get a motion by Santo, second by Margaret. All in favor, say aye. Ready, posed. Your non-emotion passes. We'll move on to seven point two discussion creating a staff retention bonus. I think this was, uh, council member Margaret.
It's just an idea if we want to have, uh, the city administrator look into the viability of doing that. To try and keep people longer than historically we've been able to keep them. Um, I have experience using retention bonuses typically when we used to buy companies and we needed to lay off people after we bought the company. But we wanted to keep them on for a certain period of time. We would offer a retention bonus and many people took that. Um. You have to make it so it's, um, it's, it incentivizes people to stay longer than six months or a year and. Uh, if there's any interest, I didn't want to waste anyone's time, but it's, might be something to consider. Uh, given that, um, I believe we've lost, um, a number of the people, the last three people we've lost to. I think at least two out of the three got much bigger wage increases. Uh, and that's why they left. So. Um, I'm just putting it out there. If we want Steve to look into that, I don't even know if it's legal from king government entities do that or municipalities do that. Or are there certain laws that prove prohibit that?
So I think we've had this discussion for maybe a couple of years ago and I thought at the time we understood it wasn't legal to do, it is.
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, terminology matters here. It's not lawful to give bonuses to public employees. So the only, uh, lawful way I'm aware of to accomplish that objective would be to design a salary structure. That back ended a certain amount of the salary or something like that. But it wouldn't be a bonus. It would have to be some way that you create yourself.
And that's what I was try, I would try to prevent that because I don't want wage inflation by adding it to the wage. It's like a one-time payment. Or it doesn't go up, just the, it's just a one-time payment, but you, that, that can't be done. Is it what you think it can't be done? And it sounds like the mayor said that they looked into this a couple of years ago.
The, the true bonus idea, uh, for retention is not lawful in public setting. You, you could look at any number of.
We could increase our wages is what you're saying. And that's a way to.
Um, well, there's, I guess, not exactly what I was saying, but obviously increasing wages. Uh, being competitively priced in the market is, is, is step one. Um, what I was saying about was something much more esoteric and maybe exotic where, um. If the salary is X, you get paid, uh, you know, eighty percent of X through the first eleven months and in a bigger lump of that in the last month.
Oh, okay.
Uh, something like, something where you, I'm not aware of any examples of that happening. Uh, in the public sector, the only experiment I'm aware of in the public sector around this concept is in. Uh, CBAs for law enforcement that have been going on in the post-two thousand twenty era where everyone is clamoring. For the very scarce resources and want to keep whoever they get, they bake those things into their CBAs. Uh, and I, I can't speak to any, um, uh, studied, um. Survey of how that actually works and I'm not sure how lawful it actually is. I'm not giving advice on that.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I, I think legally it'd be hard to accomplish it in a way. That would still attract the typical pool of public employment act, uh, applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I think it is a topic that as we start to talk about budget, um. You know, a couple of years ago, we were talking about what the pay scale is and, and how that looks. I think that'd be a great time to talk about it. But I also think that based on our last conversation, last meeting, um, is this the, the issue or not? And I don't think it's been addressed still. So I think that needs to be something that we, we talk about.
It's a workshop on top of all of them. Does that make sense?
Well, I did throw, uh, an email to city administrator with some thoughts. Um, I think that provides. Some steps to having a productive workshop rather than just slinging more words around. I think that we could. Actually start with, you know, trying to find what's, what's the common ground, what's the issue that we might be having? So that we can find what the, what the true cause is and fix it. So if we are gonna do a, a workshop. I propose that we look at what I put on that piece of paper for what the agenda could be. And have some work beforehand so that both sides or all council members understand what, uh. Uh, other council members are considering during that workshop.
So taking the subject hand and, and that is a certainly a, a separate subject. I appreciate your thoughts that you structured it out here today. I think, uh, Steve was waiting, I have a response, was waiting to send that out to council as well, but, um. I think. Are we, I, I'm, under the understanding that, um, not necessarily a staff retention bonus structure is probably something that we've considered this time. I, I want to settle the topic on this.
It, I, it doesn't sound like that, so.
Okay, so we can.
But I think when we're talking budget, and sorry, I got off tangent. Um, as we're talking budget, we should be considering that. What is our, what is our pay scale? What's, what's it look for in twenty-six? But take that budget season to be able to. Uh, have that conversation for retention.
That's probably the appropriate time to have that, you know, again, leading up to that study, some market data. Again, um, we've done that in the past a little bit. That's an ever-changing target. Um, especially given the ups and downs of, you know, the ability to hire people. So. I think it'd be worthwhile looking at that target again and making sure that we are reading that target. Okay, anything else on this topic before we move on? Sounds good. It moved to seven point three recommendation for building official position administration whiskey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so myself and Mayor Costak and Council Member Satterbach. Met about the one applicant that we received for the building official position. While kind of qualified, um, probably not what we were looking for in that position as a whole. Um, and given, given the turnover that we had have. Um, one of the, one of the ideas that we came out of that meeting was proposing to the council of a. Not an entry level planner, but more of a, um, permit tech slash code enforcement position. Uh, that would be an in-office position, someone that's not gonna be out in, uh, out in the field. Like a building official would be as much, uh, but would be here to answer questions. You know, about driveways and about, um. Any of the little stuff that comes in that, that Claire and her team wouldn't handle. Um, but someone that's in the office. You know, forty hours a week, um, give or take some code enforcement type of stuff. Um, so we're, we're looking to change directions and would, would seek council approval to do that, uh, to write up a job description, get a wage for that. And, and the like for that. Uh, we'd still use Metro West for inspections. While we wouldn't save as much money, um, going away from Metro West, um, this position wouldn't be. Uh, where Matt was at the time. So there would be some savings to the city for this position.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. Um, just to, you know, come back in that a little bit. Um, you know, given that we only had one application for that building official position. Um, it was way, the price was way higher than what our expectations were for that position. Um. So we, we, you know, Jay, myself and Steve sat down to discuss that. And, and again, recommending, uh, we go a little different direction with that position, kind of back to where we had. Similar to the math position, but more of a more emphasis with, you know, code compliance and, and other pieces that are similar to that, that, uh. Builds a need where we need to, you know, answer questions about permits. We, we do get a lot of court compliance. We, we do get a lot of court compliance, planes that need to be handled. I think this would be, give us a good spot to cover both those pieces. Jim, anything additional add?
Yeah, um, well, if you look at, we just spent uh, for June. About twenty eight thousand between MSA and uh, the building inspection services. Part of that is issuing, is issuing a permit. It's basically a clerical. It can be more of a clerical thing. I wasn't really impressed with the resume that we got. Versus what we were actually looking for. I mean, it was, you know, it was a good resume, but. Again, I think if we were going to take over and replace our um, our contract. We weren't really getting there uh, with, with what we had out there. So I think just going back as well as. Currently, we really just find place to house, so. I think that uh. It would be great if we could do that and it would. Going forward with what we hope to do. Uh, but in the meantime, I think replacing. Uh, the, the ability to hand out permits at a counter, be able to do that uh, as well as. Steve, how many, how many complaints were we receiving, ordinance complaints? In the last, it's really stepped up quite a bit and that shouldn't really be the full-time job of the administrator. As it is, uh, you know, we're not getting that, those, those require somebody going out, looking at it. Making sure that it's actually something's being done, generating a letter. I think it's important that we fill in that gap that we don't have covered right now. Um, so, you know, that's, that's kind of just my thoughts on it. We're taking a step back. We can get somebody more in the, in the tech or, or uh, clerical counter person. Thank to be able to do those and handle all of those and it's, it's getting the services out that we need to be about. So I recommend that we change this. Scope that we're looking to hire and uh. Reduce it a little bit and then we'll deal with that. Uh, the other aspect is that sometime in the future.
Any other comments or questions?
M S A is handling the permits today?
Correct. Yeah, Amy, before she left, was handling some of those. Water heater permits, small deck permits, um, driveway stuff, just getting those issued and, and submitted over to Metro West. Um, and now we're, we're paying more to have MSA do that.
But when we hire a clerk, we can probably have the clerk. We knows again.
That, that is true. Um, that wasn't part of the clerk's position and Amy had. Had uh, experience doing that in some former jobs, so she, she did kind of step in. Um, when, when Matt left and kind of took that over, um, but it wasn't initially part of that position. Uh, and there is also, I would, I would say there's a lot of non-compliant CUPs and IUPs currently that need to be reviewed. Um, that haven't been reviewed in a long time, and I think that's, that would be a, a big part of that position too.
Wouldn't that require though an expert, kind of like a city planner expert as opposed to a junior? Person that worth talking about?
Uh, it, Councilman Market, I think, yeah, that there's, there's a, there's a line there, um, and really the review is, you know. Have they submitted their annual? Um, we're still a business, you know, is there more employees? Can they go out and take pictures? Are they, are they just, are they running a? Are they doing more than what their conditions say? Are they, they're doing more than just storage, those type of things that are visual that? Um, that they can look for and then there will be some more extensive stuff that will need a MSA for, but.
I do have thoughts. Bringing in someone that's a little greener. Are we an attractive organization for someone coming out of high school or college and coming and working? In, in this building and or, or a community, I, I just struggle with that. So I think hiring that is a really big challenge. I think where we've been very successful in the past. Is where we have uh, individuals that are maybe retired and looking for a part-time position that they can do something in retirement. Uh, you look at our, our payroll technician. Um, uh, you look at some of the other individuals that we've had over the years and that those have been very successful. I just. I strongly feel like we're gonna struggle. We might find someone, but I think retention is going to be a very big challenge. Uh, with someone that's just coming out of school or, or high school and looking for the next position. So I, I would recommend not going in that position unless we're gonna. Uh, really consider someone from Critter River that's looking for something very. Close to home that is looking for a role specifically like, like, like this. I just think we're gonna be back in the same position in a six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months again.
So we have basically two needs that need to be filled. Uh, and it's not to say that that isn't the way we should go, is to, you know, maybe there are two part-time positions or. Something like that, that's possible too. But I think what we have to look at is what do we need to fill? And uh. Who are the candidates that we could get to fill? And I totally agree with Abe, but we would find somebody actually local. Possibly uh, a part-time thing could be good, but the question is, how much work is there? Um, is there? At this point, it's easily a full-time job between two positions. That, that we're looking to try to, for the two things that we're trying to accomplish with this, and it could be more. Depending on how skilled the person is to be able to take on more parts of those, of those things. I, I think we. We can have a lesser skill level because when they run into. More complicated compliance issues and things like that, then they could be the person who flags it to the. Of change to somebody else that can handle it better, but to continue to not fill this in and just. Pay contract for it, we're also not getting a lot of things addressed. We're not getting, uh, you know, we had thirty. Complaints, code complaints last, and it's not, we're not talking about building code, we're talking about zoning. And our ordinances that we have, and so we have a lot of complaints that are out there that are not actually getting addressed. Or uh, they're taking too much time from the person that's supposed to be running the city, not. Dealing with that, with the, the clerical aspect of that. Uh, you know, I think we need to, we need to fix that. And, and get somebody in there to do that. Now, how we do it? I actually kind of like what he was saying about possibly bringing in. A more experienced older person, can't really talk about age, but uh, you know, that's, that is, that is a possibility. To look at that, um, so as a part-time, not a full-time. And we create two part-time things. Maybe there's an aspect of working at all. Uh, out of it, for some, for some portions of it. Now, there's, there's more that we can do here. In order to get this thing solved, but I think it's really important to get it solved. Because looking at it, I mean, we did pay twenty, almost twenty thousand dollars. Some of that is. Some pretty miscellaneous stuff that we, that we paid out last month. And yes, it's covered by fees, but you know, is that fair to the fee payer? And the other side of it is, that's not covering the complaints and then the zoning problem that we have. You know, now that we have, now that we have a nuisance ordinance, it's getting used.
We uh, we've always had a nuisance ordinance, we have.
It's gotten better.
We have complaints that are three years old that hadn't been addressed. It's, it's kind of the same thing. We just keep kicking the can down the road, so. I think we should get a compliance officer and someone that can help write, write permits and. You don't have to hire the twenty-year-old kid or whatever. We can be a little more selective on who we hire. Give it a shot. We don't have to hire anybody, but we should, or to the folks to get somebody to. Correct some of these problems that have been out there.
City administrator, do you know if there's any um, third parties that do that type of work on a per-call basis or? Like ordinance, like they, in Texas, they had these constables or whatever that would go out and do this. They didn't carry guns, so.
Also, I'm a marketer. I can certainly look. I haven't, I haven't looked yet.
Cause that would be my point of insight. Uh, I guess I'm not comfortable saying that it's a full-time job because I don't see any. I don't see any volume counts and I don't see any reports that say this is getting out of hand. The, all of these things are, there's no aging of the complaints. So it's really hard for me to get comfortable saying that, yeah, this, we need a. To do this and that, maybe there are reports, we just have it, the council hasn't seen them. Um, but I, I'm, as we voted last time, I, I, I voted that. I would just prefer having contracted staff to do this work as opposed to hiring someone. So that's, that's my, um, I'm more on, on Abe's side, but I'll practicality out, just hire some third party.
So last week I got calls from three people and a couple of developers because they couldn't get ahold of anybody. I do too, on, on permits, permanent applications, um, questions like that, I, you know. It is, that's a, I think that's a really common thing that people are trying to find out, what can I do? Can I do this? And. When you have a contract to do that. The tree of how to get to that contractor, the contractor is working with their ten other clients. And so ours isn't necessarily always a, a list for that answer for that call. So after some of these people that I talked to last week, after a couple of weeks of waiting for a response, started calling. Councilmembers and other people that they could find phone numbers over there. I think we struggled with that for a while now. This position would fill that need, be able to be that person to football some of these questions, get the answers from the experts. Where is there, where is the process that theirs is in right now? Um, along with dealing with some of these code compliance pieces. Yeah, I don't pretend that we're gonna be the most attractive in the world as Abe mentioned, um. But I think it's worthwhile giving it a shot, creating a, a job description. Given Steve the authorization to create that description and bring it back to the council to take a look at that, at least see what that looks. Before we uh, you know, just not do anything here, um. I think it was a position that worked well when we had Matt here, who was that first point of contact for a lot of things. I certainly did, I got received a lot less. Complaints about response time. Well, Matt was here. Now those complaints for other reasons, but um, not about response time at that point, and that's where I think we struggle with. Where we're at today.
Yeah, we don't have a gatekeeper for it, essentially.
Right, I mean, it's fine, it lands in a queue and whenever somebody in MSA picks it up, it gets handled.
Yeah, council members, I, I forwarded fifty-one message, voicemail messages to MSA in the last two weeks. That were just, those were voicemails that were left, that wasn't calls. Some of them were urgent, some were not, but um, there's a, there's a lot right now. So I'm, and that's not what came to me personally either, so. Those were on Amy's, Amy's phone or, or whatever, so, and those, they're twenty, twenty to thirty a week right now. So there is.
There's a need.
There's a lack of response time too, because I'm gonna say, you know, we're not their own city. You know, Claire, Claire was working on for herself, or cities herself, so.
The ones that went to Amy though, were those clerk, were those clerk related? When, so when we have a clerk?
No, uh, there was, that was just the permitting and zoning question.
Fifty-one voicemails related to permits and ordinances in two weeks.
Yeah, since Amy left until last Friday.
Okay, and how about the two weeks before Amy left?
The, I, that I don't know, because those are just ones that I've, I sent to Claire personally, so I don't know how many Amy was sending.
I feel more comfortable approving headcount increases by having reports that say, hey, we're at a point where we, we can't do this anymore. So it would be nice if, over time, if you could develop something like that. Uh, I don't have any problem drafting a. Drafting a, a job description and then I assume that would include a salary range for all that.
I would also see if there's contractors that would do that work too and provide that information.
And maybe provide a similar analysis that you did uh, a month ago.
So question then, is MSA not doing what we're asking? Do we have in our contract? Uh, what they need to be doing, uh, because it sounds like, I think we had the perfect storm, right? Amy left, there was some staff had been time off, Lucas had left, so I mean, it. It was pretty skeleton, right? Bare bones around here.
Claire's having a baby.
Claire's having a baby, um, so. Are, is there something contractually that MSA is not doing, uh, that we have to? Be following up with them?
No, Councilman Rosanto, I, I just, MSA is not here to answer or take the call, so until someone forwards them a message, then. They, they are not aware of it. If people don't email, the planner email, uh, MSA checks that. And, and nothing's to say they're not getting back to them. I was just giving you a number of how many.
Yeah.
Were sent. Uh, I don't think MSA is doing a poor job returning, returning calls or emails.
So maybe in addition, I know I'm veering off again, I apologize. Uh, maybe we look at our technology and maybe we have a call queue that we put in here, so if we've got a permit question and we can funnel it. To MSA straight away instead of having to go to you or at least a copy or something of that nature. Where we can streamline that to get better customer service.
Don't give them the option zero.
Thought on that though, is, is the, kind of goes back to the other side. We're lacking a gatekeeper because a lot of these calls are. Citizens, developers, different things where they're, where they're just seeking information. They're not actually trying to do something. They're looking at, trying to get some information, how streamline the process, how to give them. Whatever it is that they're trying to get, and that's not, uh, you know, with, with our, uh, with our current contract people. They make money essentially, uh, our inspector and everything else, they make money when they have permit. This, this filled out. Uh, they're not there to educate the public, they're not there to do those things. I mean, that's, that's still our job. We still have to do that, and, and that's part of the thing, it's not getting filled. You know, so it might be somebody that's just looking at, hey, I want to get a debt permit, what do I need to do? You know, I'm looking at. If you're looking at the website, great, it tells, it gives some information, but if it really doesn't answer that and, and to. To be that full-service. Little city or township or whatever we are, whatever we want to call ourselves, we need to provide that service, we need to provide that information. And if we're not providing it, you know, we can't, you can't have somebody just go online to log form and put a credit card into it, make a permit. The same thing goes with ordinances and things like that. Somebody's calling you. We've tried to make this so that they do, that somebody complaining about zoning complaint or whatever. Fills out a form, does the rest of it, then we get back to them, but then who's getting back to them? And are we filling up our administrator's day? Doing that, or do we have somebody else does that? Can we, you know, that's. We've had a whole bunch of people that filled in different spots and, you know, here, but. We really think, have to think about compartmentalizing the different things that we need to provide. And then making sure that they're getting covered, and we're not doing that. We're not doing that by just saying, hey, we can just hire somebody and, hey, that's our guy that's gonna do that. Uh, for a contract, going out, you know, do we wanna, maybe we should just hire out a contract city administrator. To completely do the, handle the whole thing, you know, that, that's, I guess it's possible, maybe. That's out there, but are we providing services or are we not? And when people don't get services, obviously they'll complain about it. So we need to provide services. It also adds stress to the employees that we've got that are trying to cover different things without a true description. Just be covering, so I think we need to fix that too, that goes back to, goes back to Abe's, Abe's, some of Abe's suggestions. Some of Abe's suggestions.
Well, like. Last Wednesday I talked to Shane when he got back about a couple of things and uh one with bypass lanes out here. This just happened, I was in here Thursday doing some stuff. You know, the contractor came in for his permit, started moving the dirt. Had his two hundred dollar check in his hand and. Uh Donna and I were here and I said. What? Why don't you talk to Shane, because some of the stuff. He relayed to me about this job. You have two different plans, you have to have one point. And he said, well, yeah, we're kind of gonna put them together. Like, oh, boy, and you want to start moving dirt? So. He called MSA and I said, no, you have to get your plans script going first, so. It's just, it's stuff like that, if there was someone here to. And I. Take those questions would be nice. Not just, you guys aren't doing a good job here, but it's not. Your job, so.
I guess what I propose is that. We direct Steve to take a stab at a a. Job description. Also take a look at, I think Bill had requested, you know, is there any other opportunity that we can? There's somebody else that can handle that as far as the whole compliance. If they be and and also looking into making sure that. You know, we feel like we're getting the proper amount of assistance from MSA that we expect. Um and maybe we can consider something. Like a phone queue as as they have suggested or something like that, that maybe assists that, I think, I think we need more information, I think, you know, I think. There's a lot of good ideas about it, I think we just need some homework on those ones, so that we have all that stuff in front of us at some point rather than taking guesses.
Yeah, if Mr. Mayor, if I could add, I'd like, I I think that perhaps Steve could also. Put out a list of needs. That need to be, you know, that that need to be addressed, so that we could, you know, figure out who's gonna do those things. But you know, the fact is, we don't, we've got a lot of things, we've got snow plowing covered. We've got ditch mowing covered, we've got park mowing covered, we've got CSDS mowing. We've got certain things that are done, but we always forget about all the different little things that are in the middle of this thing that aren't getting addressed and. You know. They get handled and they they just somehow get handled, then they, you know, they're not part of this thing, but as. This the stuff that doesn't get handled. Just continues to grow. And. We're just not addressing, we're just not addressing it with. This is the person that does that, and this is actually a task, so it doesn't actually get on a list. It it it's not there, it's 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 kind of hiding. So you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about spending money to do these things, or have somebody do them, or have or figure out there's a need. Then we should have that, we should have that list of things done. So if there's somebody, if there's something that somebody here as an employee was doing. That that isn't really known. I think I think it needs to be, it needs to be lighted date and and be listed so that we can say, here's a task that needs to be accomplished.
Oh, listy a lot.
It, well, we need to have the list that's 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 relevant. So it could be very long, I'm guessing it's gonna be very long, but at least it finally would allow us. Figure out who's doing what and what our true needs are.
You you guys don't see this, I I probably see more than anybody driving around doing these things, cutting the ditches and whatever. Tree hanging over the sign that's twisted or bent over the. The hole that needs to be fixed in the in the road should be. Uh a bag of. Mix from Leinards and you can throw it in there, drive over it a couple of times, it's fixed instead of spending. A thousand dollars apparently blacktop to come out and build, you know? So. There is a list. So we should have that list, we'll get it. Anyhow.
Okay. Well, I think um I'm gonna go back to my recommendation with that for making use of a motion uh that will do direct. Steve to. Take a stab at drafting a new job description. Work on um considering any kind of contractors for code enforcement. Uh considered, you know, what kinds of technology opportunities that we could to redirect staff. Review what MSA and their current contract is to verify that we are indeed satisfied with that work that's being done. And bring that research back to council at a later time for us to consider.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Kostik, seconded by Shomer, I'll say hi, hi.
Hi.
You may pose. Your non-motion passes. Seven front four, considered for new city hall entrance and door replacement, I believe, House Member Shomer.
No, that's all I ask for. Quote's in front of you for a. One quarters to replace the two doors with aluminum. Frames and doors and windows. And all the hard work, the other one is to add a vestibule. To the side entrance over there. With aluminum frames and aluminum door. Full glass and so. If I take any action on it, I just. The doors are getting kind of crappy that when you can see all probably nine months out of the year. The other one rubs in the spring, so. And we could put some type of uh security into those doors with the double set of doors out here.
Mr. Mayor. All see about the choices aside, technically. Two quotes are required.
Yep.
Uh this this would count as one quote, there's a few different scopes, so you need to get. One more quote from another company before council can act, or we need some. Record basis to conclude, it's not practical or possible to get a second phone.
Yes, I thought there was a threshold of one dollars where you need it. For service.
Uh there is, the only threshold is the language that's used to describe it, if the. If the quotes or the contract's gonna be between twenty five thousand and a hundred and seventy five thousand, you have to get two quotes if possible. The less than twenty five thousand, you have to get two quotes, at least two quotes, so far as practicable. I don't know how much daylight there is between those two, those two commands, but if it's. If it's a simple matter of getting quotes, we need to get them.
Yep. Another. Uh the reason I put it on here is to get the. Wall rolling to. Do something to make this a little bit safe. I can get another quote from another company.
I think that would be appropriate.
If that's the direction you guys want to go, so.
I think also, you know, these are, these would come in a little late this afternoon.
Yeah.
I mean, I appreciate you doing this and getting these quotes, I think that's definitely something we can consider. But I think would be appropriate for a second quote.
Sure.
And uh some time for council to consider that. And council members, have any thoughts?
I don't have a problem getting a second quote, I would like to make a decision on whether we're gonna remodel this place, whether we can actually do something with it. Um and have that decision before we start putting money into something that might do something different with, so. The time, I'm I'm all for this, if we don't end up wanting to do anything with this building other than fix the doors. But I think we need to have a decision on the other thing first before we do this. I'm I'm fine with having another quote.
Any other questions or comments in the council?
I think we should, whatever we do, I think we should speed it up because we have a security problem with uh. With employees and.
Well.
The building is not necessarily safe. If.
Not at this time, it's not, we're not public hearing right now.
Uh it I mean, we do have a security problem um. That. It's it's truly not safe. What the setup that we have right now, uh whether that means that uh. You know, we need to. Beef up the door that we have, problem with the door that we have is it's shut, I mean, it's worn out, you know, it needs to be replaced, one way or the other. There, that leaves a lot of options. We should have, I believe, a dual entrance or a. A man, essentially a man trap vestibule type entrance that's secure. On the inside that allows somebody to be identified, um you know, we could have, we could add. A working window to that with the counter. I, you know, I think whether we whether we do anything with this. We're not, we're not gonna replace and 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 remodel or or go through the whole process. Without going through a a process, which can take some time and. And I think just to make it a little safer, I think we ought to think about that, at least do this. I'm just gonna suggest that we uh actually get three bids for it, but the the other side of it is, we don't have. We don't have a full uh scope. On it, we're just replacing the door uh by door on frame, adding some windows to it, or we're adding a vestibule, but there's a lot of the other things that go along with that. Which will be added security to it, uh some case work to add add a counter. Into that, the work of a counter that could be done into that. Without actually allowing somebody to enter the building, just come up to the, come up to the window, you know, or do we kind of put their own, do something with this entrance here instead? And do an outside, an outside vestibule, so that we're not wasting space that we have, I mean, there's some thoughts. Uh I think we ought to have. We ought to have a consultant at least to look at it. Qualified consultant, I represent. That would at least give us a little better scope of what we have to do of. We have uh some comments this. At our earlier forum. And I do think that we need to check before we get too crazy with this thing. We know what our current permit is for for our holding tank. And we're out of compliance on that, and we 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 have that, I mean, we know what that is. Whether or not we can actually add, put it in training field, I mean, that's there's possibly somebody said we could. You know, that's that's not on paper or anything else. We should be thinking about that, we should be thinking about some of the other improvements, we should test the air quality here, should do some other things. Along with that, I think we ought to do that, we have. We have to make a decision tonight to do something before this getting. Getting something going on on finding out those things and I I I do believe that we ought to do something with the doors, whether whether we're gonna. Remodel this place later or do whatever, I think we need to make a safe transition.
Okay.
New work. Back when. We had mold problem and Surf Pro came out. It kind of got remodeled. I think I was in. Twelve working. And Surf Pro did it. And it had the same smell in here, and we got clean bill of health at that time, so. Nothing was really. Change other than the floor in here. But we. Um Surf Surf Pro does uh. Air analysis, stuff like that, I believe they do. Your company. Could reach out to to. Check the air quality and whatever else. As soon as possible.
So um that's a topic at hand, is there any um other thoughts on the direction, you know, lever, provided these two quotes? We have him to, or sorry, one quote, well, there's two quotes for two different items. Uh are we gonna ask him to research the one quote tonight, or we put this on hold till we can figure out some other pieces here?
I think we should uh. Authorize our administrator to. Get us a couple of consultants to. Give us something that we can actually act on. Completely, I like, I mean, I like this. What we're doing, I think we should think about the vestibule option. But it should be something that's secure from the inside, probably with a buzzer and our electric block be and be added in. Uh it also should have uh some sort of a a window or something and a counter. Built into it that uh somebody could actually. Come into the vestibule and conduct business with clerk or whatever, uh without actually. Any full access to office.
Okay.
Sometimes we have a clerk that's here by themselves. Or there are different times when we have a single employee that's here by themselves. It's just. It would definitely add to the safety factor for the employee.
Okay, here are comments, is anybody open to make a motion or giving directions on this one?
Just one quick comment, whoever did the ring, thank you. Uh have we been able to utilize it? Good, so I mean. That should be a level of security that we have now as well, I I know it's not. The bulletproof proof glass and the vestibule, but at least you can lock the door and not have to.
What a deadbolt, would a deadbolt help? Too, and that would be relative, I never installed a deadbolt, but. I, would that be relatively easy to install too, so we could get something done immediately?
You, you can't put a deadbolt in, that could see legal for fire, it could.
Unless you have a crash bar.
You need to have a commercial type of handle that flips it at the same time.
You have to have a square crash bar. Well. Okay.
Yeah, but that, I don't know that, could you do that on a door like that? I mean, the the frame, the frame was a little twisted on it too, I know there's that. What the the large part is, is you are shut.
You can but.
The door is blown open a couple of different times.
The residential lock is way better than panic device, because panic device, you have to dog walk in for a meeting. So it's not blocked all the time and different things where this is, you know. One or the other, it's just.
It can get pretty expensive pretty fast.
Mm-hmm. Cause. When you're talking about bulletproof glass.
It's been, it's gonna be where you stop.
Exactly.
Knowing we have glass in the vestibule, that's means.
Mm-hmm. It's a thing. Yep.
I would personally recommend, let's let's figure out what we're doing with this building before we put a lot of money into it, that's my personal opinion.
But we could still get another quote, the C S is reasonable.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to get a quote for the same thing that you're talking about doing, this way we have some more information. Okay, anything else on that one? Sounds good, we'll run a seven point five, which is the um three point two percent agenda extending the term to the city's government center advisory committee. Um I did pull this item. For a couple raises, everyone, I don't believe it to be a routine item that shouldn't go without being discussed. Um I also don't believe that we should extend the term of my billing committee without us council having opportunity to discuss. What our long, our strategy thoughts are um and just bringing that loose. Building committee did the report. There was no continuation of any um. You know, accepting any report at that time, there was no additional tasks given at that time. So I'm not sure that we have any alignment that a additional task for the billing committee to do. I think we would be much better off taking the time, stepping back and and having some other discussions about it before we. Do, and then if the discussions lead into some specific tasks that we would like something like that to do, then I would be okay considering that, but at this time, I'm not uh. I'm not okay with just blindly considering uh. Additional time and we haven't really discussed the. Current situation of what are we gonna do with this building, what are our future plans, what are our options?
I disagree with what you just said, Mayor, I would like to continue with the, having the uh team continue its work, I value what they've done. I think it's important that we get our citizens involved in this, they have ideas that they want to pursue. Uh it doesn't cost us, I don't believe, any money. To have have that committee continue. I think it's gonna give a negative pers- perspective, we're gonna have a negative view of us not wanting to listen to citizens. Uh they have ideas on what they want to do next. Uh I see no negatives to have them continue doing what they're doing, you, we don't have to take their. Uh you know, take their recommendations, in fact, when I made the motion to accept the recommendations, they didn't pass, so. Uh I don't think, I don't think there's any good reason to dissolve it. Uh we 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 use an arbitrary. We, we, we use an arbitrary end date. It was just an arbitrary end date, all we do is extending the date, and I think we should have them continue their work. And I, I forgot to mention one thing, if the council members that are liaisons now don't wanna continue with that, I'd be happy to take on that role as liaison to the committee. So I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the resolution as drafted.
Can I make a statement? I think there's value in the, in the committee. I think the. Just having another twelve months doesn't do justice to the council or to them without. The objectives that we're going to have them do. I do think though, we should rather quickly do some sort of. Work session with the planning commission with us, with the, with the citizens advisory committee. To have a, a, a good discussion, have them be able to speak more, ask those questions, cuz I think there's a lot of. We don't understand why you're going this direction. And the other side is saying, we don't understand why you're going that direction. So I think having that work session to be able to talk about these items, and be able to address. Some of the discussions that were brought at the podium today, I think that would be super helpful. So, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping them alive, cuz I do like the citizens. Advisory committee for the purpose that they bring different thoughts and ideas to the table. I just think that we should get some objectives in place, but start with a work session, and that work session could maybe. Bring up some of those objectives that they could go on and help us with.
Any other comments, questions? There's a motion on the floor.
Could I make a friendly amendment?
Offer an amendment, see if those will end accepted.
So I, I think we should have a work session prior to extending the, the twelve month session.
So you're, that's a different, so you wanna amend?
I wanna amend bills to say prior to that, have a work session so that we can give direction to them.
Billy, will you accept the amendment, or do you wanna stay with your motion?
I, I don't think the resolution works. If we have to have a workshop, the resolution is just to extend the term. So you're just making a new motion to have a workshop. And this resolution doesn't, doesn't get voted on, or there's no second. So I, I don't know, can, I don't know what.
Well, so you have the choice to continue with your motion, I'm waiting to see if we get a second.
I would like to continue with, well, actually, if he's making, I think he can make another motion. And we have to vote on his motion first, cuz it's an alternative motion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Margaret, I understand the mayor is the parliamentarian of the council, but you're looking at me, I'm happy to answer the question, if you'd like, about the procedure. At this point, the only thing that has been put on the floor is a request for a friendly amendment. If you say no to that, then council member Zonto has the opportunity to bring a motion to amend your motion. That would trigger a vote on the amendment. Right now, there's not. And then as to your concern about the practicality of marrying the resolution as drafted to the amendment. I think it would be a simple matter of conditioning the resolution, adding a condition that provided that first, the council and. Planning commission and the committee hold a workshop to establish objectives. And if you would accept that amendment, we could revise the resolution as, as amended at the, at the table. To accomplish your motion as amended by council member Zonto, if that's the pathway.
Simple.
I, I will accept that. Steve, you'll have to listen. Then I make a, just a, would you wanna add, this workshop will take place in the next thirty days, so it doesn't.
That'd be great.
Go into black hole? Okay, so within thirty days of tonight. What Peter said.
You got that?
And hang on, I want, I'd like you to appreciate some clarification for being asked to vote on, we've been voting on the resolution. We're voting on Dave's workshop.
We're voting on an amended resolution where this resolution passed, we, we, we have a workshop. And if the workshop, you, you said it beautifully, but I can't remember what you said, it's, it's right.
Thirty days, thirty day, I, you know, I think. Depends on when it is, and I do think that we should have workshop. I think that the resolution should, at this point, die. For currently, I think we should have a rest, we should have a workshop. And then we should, we should establish some, some new goals. Because out of what we got from this, we had. A, a single pathway that was taken on this was, we didn't look at other options. I would like to see some other options. I think we also came out of this with some conclusions. That we need some more information. That information is a task for the city. To do, which has to do with the possible, the possibilities of this building. During those meetings, there were caveats to everything that went through this, which were, if we can do that. I think we need to spend some time and spend some capital to find out. What we can and can't do with this building. Because right now, we've got. A bunch of people say, well, we should do that. I got, I got forty some emails from residents. Or more than that, which were, I, you know, we should just do this, we should do this. But it was never in the thing that we needed to find out if we could. I mean, we had kind of a little, you know, with the thing when we found out about our, our. Holding tank compliance, that we're out of compliance with. With, you know, with the use of the building right now. I, you know, I think those are some of the things that we have to answer. We can't have a workshop until we have some answers, because, you know, everything's hypothetical. And we're wasting some really, really valuable citizens' time that we're on the committee. If we don't have the true answers, we need to have an architect say, yes, you can do this. We probably need a plumbing engineer that can look at it and say, yeah, you can, you can build a drain field for this, or we can do this, or we can't. And then we should know that stuff before we continue to waste everybody's time with more meetings. You know, monthly meetings and doing the rest of it, and doing that, unless we're gonna go out and explore other opportunities. You know, then, then we should explore other opportunities. But if there's a chance to use this, I think a lot of people like it. You know, that's, that's kind of the thing, we need to, we need to figure out who can. And, and what it would take to, to, to do that. It's not very expensive, that also would take care of figuring out what we're gonna do with security indoors. And we could, then there's things that we could break off very quickly and take care of. But we need to, before we, about having even a meeting to figure out, we haven't got the answers, we still have all these answers. Tom had some very valuable stuff that he, that he basically said. And it wasn't a complete list either. But we need to, we need to really figure out what's the, what's our sewer situation. What can we do? We have, a contractor says, oh yeah, we could build one, but did he really study everything? We don't know that. It's not inviting. We didn't have a, we didn't have a qualified engineer, plumbing engineer. Design the system and, and say, yes, you can or you can't, you have, we don't know what we can do, we should find that out. And I think that should be our priority. We should spend the next thirty days at least trying to find out those things. And then we can have a workshop, then we can have some answers, and we can, then we can say, well, it's gonna work, we, we could. Do something with this building, and then we could use, easily use a committee to do more with it. Or we need to look at different situations. But at least that way, we could, we could give them a direction. We can't give anybody a new direction, this, because we already have the information that was given to us. This is what they thought that we should do. And, you know, we, it was, it's up to us to figure out, can we do it or not? I think we should just do that. So, all of these motions that we have right now are really not dramatic. I think what we need to do is, we need to, we can pause the committee for now. We can keep the same people that are in it, we can do the rest of that, we don't, you know, we can extend it, but we don't have to do that tonight. I think what we need to do is, we need to authorize our administrator to, to go forward with at least getting some of those. Informational things that we need to do, address. Find out what we can do for security of this thing, find out what we can expand, what we can't. You know, that, that, that we, at least gives people something, as well as, I think we come back with a list of the things that we, the tasks that the city needs to provide. And do, and then we can figure out what our true need for personalities here. All of those things are, are kind of dark before the horse, we need to get that, we need to get those things answered first. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at. You've got a friendly amendment that's been asked, and you've got a motion on the table that has to second that.
I'm, I'm out of, I'm amending my motion to account for. Adopting this resolution, subject to the workshop that will be held, where we want to adopt the resolution. I'm not saying it as good as you did, and that we have this workshop within thirty days. That's my motion, Mr. Mayor, so I'm looking for a second on that.
I would second that.
Okay, I've got a motion to second, I'm upper one comment, I said, I, I. I think I'm, I'm offer that I would appreciate that the timeline for the. That we don't put a timeline on the workshop, that we direct. The administrator to work on that, considering everybody's schedules, thirty days makes it a tight timeline. If anybody has a travel times or anything like that, it might make it different, but I, I would also. Don't necessarily wanna approve this resolution, because I think we need to do this workshop first to come up with our tasks. For the, for the committee. So with that, any other comment discussion before we take a vote?
I'd just like to say that. With us, the. Planning. Folks and. The committee, it's gonna be, it was hard to schedule a, a day in thirty days, I think, with vacations and everything, so.
Yeah, and, and my preference would be the council needs to stop and, and have a, before we add anybody else, that we need to get a direction with the council.
And I, and, and, and it still stands, we need to get information, because it's, it's some information. So, which we need to figure out what we need to ask for information on. Yeah, and, and I do support, I do support that, and my vote's gonna be no. On this, I do support that, but I, I feel that we need to instead drop it, we're trying to do here right now. We need to authorize and go get some information. We need to give the, act on the information request that we've got. Yeah, and, and find out those things so that we can have the workshop. To have a resolution, just for the point of having a resolution, is, it, is, is. It's not working for me. I think we should have, I think we should have tasks, I think we should, if, if we need to amend the bylaws and things, or. At least provide at that point, if we can say, okay, then we're going to do this thing. Then it should have some clear defined goals, what it should do. And, you know, that's, I don't know why we have to race to have a continuation of it. Right now, it's. Currently, they've, they've met the task that they were supposed to do. The timeline has, has expired for, for what was authorized. They gave us some suggestions. We need to act on those first, we need to, we need to at least fill out, figure out if we can do those things, and then we have to, we have to decide that's something we wanna go forward with. So essentially. All of this stuff is lacking the information that we need to get. And it's lacking us acting on what we have been suggested to do so far. So I think rather than, rather than doing this, I, I say. Maybe the motion just needs to be taken.
Well, we got a motion second, so if there's any discussion, I'll take that quick.
Yeah, I think we're back to what Bill said, I think we're doing a huge disservice to our citizens, where we say, we're gonna, we're gonna create a citizen advisory committee, but we're not gonna. We're gonna give some comments back to you that you didn't do what you're doing, but now we turn around and we say, well, they did finish what they were supposed to do. So I, I, I think we're speaking on both sides of our mouths. So I think we need to be able to have that discussion, and whether or not we have that resolution. We need to have some direction, and I don't think it's fair to leave them at a place where we say, thanks for your last. Ten months of service, and we're not gonna do anything more with it. So I think time is of the essence, or we have some citizens that are very interested in, in helping us with getting some. Much needed guidance that we don't have the time for. So I think it's a little bit of a slap in the face if we don't have that sooner than later.
Okay. So we've got a motion as second, and we'll take the vote, so I'll say all in favor, say aye. Motion fails three to two. I will offer an alternative motion to direct our administrator to work on scheduling. A workshop for the council to discuss the. Building situation, and, you know, at that time, I, I'd like to, us to discuss. More tasks or more direction, if we just, if we're in discuss having an extension of the, of the building committee, if there's need, if we come up with. You know, pieces that, if there's more information, and then we can bring this back in a later. Council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, yes, can we include? The current. Committee in the workshops?
I think the council needs to come together and figure out their direction. Before we add anybody else to that. That would be my motion, is as a council workshop.
I think that's the wrong, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think that's wrong. I, we have people that wanna do this work, that have been working on this for ten months, but in a lot of time. What is the harm of having them be part of the workshop?
Because we need to be focused on what is the council's direction. The, the council hasn't, doesn't have agreement on this at this point. Let's get together, have a discussion. If we wanna bring them in at a later time, we can bring them into a later time, and I don't. See what the problem is of getting the council to have a discussion about where, what our direction is. So I'm asking, is to stop, sit down, get some direction to move forward. And that's my motion.
Is that gonna be like a, a workshop? I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is second to direct administrator to work with council, discuss it, to schedule a council workshop.
I'd like to amend that motion. And ask that the current committee members be part of that workshop.
I'd be willing to amend my motion to that.
Mr. Mayor, I think you have to accept my substitute motion and have a vote on it, but I could be wrong, and I'm not a color.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I believe before there's a vote on your motion, there should be a vote on whether to accept a motion to amend it.
Okay.
And then you, or you kind of go in reverse order on the votes.
So I'll take a vote then on Bill's amendment to my motion.
Mr. Mayor, there hasn't been a second on council member Margaret's motion to amend yet.
Okay, I'll, the purpose of doing this, I'll second those motion. Okay, so that you can have a vote on it.
All in favor of Margaret's amendment to my motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Everybody opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two.
Mr. Mayor, I also wanna make one statement, based on what you said earlier, we did have this under consent agenda when we extended these committees. Back in December, if you take a look at the, the meeting minutes, and you take a look at the meeting, that is why I put it under consent, cuz we were, all we were doing is extending the. Extending the terms for both the vision committee, and for some reason, it got where we also extended. The government center, but that definitely was a consent agenda item, and that's why I put it in there, I just wanted to explain that to you.
All right, so now we have a motion to, a motion as second to. Direct administrator Jolinski to schedule a council workshop with the building committee. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed? Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Motion passes four to one. All right, we'll move on to staff and council member reports. Turning, Mike, do anything?
I have nothing.
Administrator Jolinski.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, like we talked about earlier, um. We're getting a lot of phone calls and stuff and just asking for patience for, um. Whoever calls in to, to let us get back to, we're, we're trying as, as hard as we can to get back to as soon as possible. Um, there is just a delay. So apologies and thank you for your patience.
Nothing?
Nope.
Uh, we got the brush spraying done over the weekend, so that's done. Look for a bill coming for that soon, so. You know, that's about it.
Thank you, we've got nothing.
Uh, no, other than, uh, this, the last two weeks, the only thing I did was I attended the, uh, the hearing last week on the Mesa Brink versus the city. Uh, lawsuit, so.
Okay, sue anything? Perfect. All right.
May I make the motion to amend, or to. Gosh, to adjourn, sorry. I amend my, uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second his amendment. Motion is not to second, we're all in favor to say aye.